Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the special council meeting for October 27, 2025. Generally, there is no caucus and no opportunity to address the council. This is not an opportunity at a special meeting that the council members debate or ask questions or discuss at all the items for consideration on the agenda. However, there was a public hearing. That public hearing on the issue of the block grant funding was scheduled for 11 o'clock this morning. I see all of you are here, and I spoke to some about that issue. And apparently, there was some confusion because someone changed the notice to the public about when the public hearing was. That was at 11 o'clock. No one was here, so that went very quickly. However, given that there was an error on the city's part, we are going to allow people to address these issues. And hopefully, is there anyone else who was at the public hearing that would be needed at this to answer any questions?
I mean, Dan, you were there, right?
Yeah, I was at the mayor.
And Mayor I follow was also at the public hearing.
It was...
And Carl.
And Carl, yep.
Yeah, well, Carl's here to answer questions if anybody has any questions with Carl. Do we need the mayor here?
I don't think so, Council President.
Okay. Now, I will call this meeting to order. Please rise up, please believe in us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the gooddest world, with liberty and justice for all. Will the city clerk take the roll?
LaFlehy.
President.
Anderson.
Here.
Moretti.
Here.
Sirdick.
Prosser.
Morano.
Here.
Law Department.
Here.
Public Works.
Here.
Recreation.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, now, normally, we have three-minute windows for everyone to address. City Council, it's not etched in stone, but we don't want to get people, have them get carried away. Alex, you want to come up?
Yes.
We just need your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah. Alex Entojaski resides at 17 Lurin Avenue, Buffalo, New York. But I work with the Lackawanna Community Development Corporation, as well as the Lackawanna Housing Development Corporation. Thank you for having me here today. On the matter of the community development block grant, I wanted to ask, based on the history of how the grant has been used in Lackawanna since 1991, 65 projects that have occurred since that time, excuse me, 48 of those grants received have been used for paving, reconstruction, milling, sidewalk, or road-related projects. Although those things are important, I'm curious as to, you know, moving forward for this grant cycle, what sort of, I guess, more community-related activities are there, you know, planned for this grant? And if so, you know, what can we expect to hear? Will there be a vote on something soon? Or how are the ideas for this grant discussed?
Well, Alex, to my knowledge, the block grants are controlled by the mayor's office in how they're used. In the agenda and in the communications, apparently, was a discussion, there was an indication from the mayor's office that this year's block grant was going to be used to rehabilitate and do repairs on the senior center on Martin Road. That's the extent that I know. But Dan, do you know anything more?
No, we had a discussion with the mayor. The administration decided to use this funding this year for, to go towards the senior center. Update ADA, none of the doors are ADA compliant except for the entrance. So the big issue is especially the bathroom doors. If a person's in a wheelchair or a walker, they actually can't open the door. So what they're doing now, they're kind of propping the door open, even though there's stalls. So there's really not that much privacy. And then the same thing with the doors to go into the main room, the library, none of them are ADA compliant. So that was one thing that has to be done.
Okay. Arianna, do you, have you anything else?
No.
Alex, the whole issue of block grants has been, I don't want to say controversial, but it has been debated over the years as to what it's originally intended. And if you look at the legislation, it does include such things as infrastructure, streets, sidewalks, that kind of thing. So it's a legitimate project and a legitimate source for, or designation for the funds. However, there has been, and I know, having discussed this on many occasions with George Halsey, who's here, there are many organizations that could use those funds in the city. I know several, including Access of Western New York, which is an outreach organization that's terribly in need of funds. And if you compare the city of Lackawanna just procedurally and philosophically with the city of Buffalo, and of course, you can't, with size, obviously, but there's so much more funding that goes to the city of Buffalo, millions and millions of dollars, whereas the city of Lackawanna may get $350,000. And in discussing this with the mayor, there's an indication that we may not even get, there's usually two payments. We were told, it's my understanding, that we'll probably get half of that, but there is a question as to whether we'll get even the half. But yeah, as best as I know, it's earmarked for the senior center.
Thank you for those responses. I do know the Access to Home Grant through New York State, something that LCDC or LHDC could facilitate, does cover ADA compliance issues and things for specific homes or looking into the, I don't want to say commercial, but larger buildings. That would be a way to, I guess, divert funds maybe used for, I guess, other projects aside from paving and whatnot, but we're able to use funds directed from another state source, federal funds for, I don't know, community initiatives. I mean, throwing big things out there, a community center, recreation space, or something to bolster the smaller neighborhood economic development. You know, not to say that the paving and other things aren't legitimate uses. I think having a more productive use where community can actually take place is also important. And maybe there's a way to further conversations as well to see where, you know, paving, if those things are priorities, which they are, people can get places. Again, maybe diverted from using these type of funds, whether it's $150,000, $300,000 to go towards, you know, building renovations, or which, somebody from the community just brought to my attention, bowling lane, you know, renovations or something that, where community space can be upheld. Thank you. Those are really all I had, and just wondering where, you know...
Just one further comment, Alex.
Yeah.
In an ideal world, you know, we're with you 100%. We wish we had more funding to do those kinds of things.
Yeah.
I think a conversation with the mayor's office may be appropriate, too, if you want to continue that. But yeah, it's definitely, it's definitely been a long conversation over the years as to where these funds should be directed. And I know the council members in the city of Buffalo even got, get a stipend within which they're free to disperse monies to organizations themselves in their wards. And we don't get any of that as council members. And it's a committee, it's my understanding, it's a committee of city mayors, town and village mayors that get together and vote on how much each municipality outside Buffalo and Syracuse and Albany and the bigger cities get for projects. And there is a discussion with that committee and a proposal that our mayor makes to say, we're going to use it for this, this, and this. And they have to approve it, otherwise, if they don't, we don't get anything. That's my understanding as to how it works.
Yeah. I can't say too, speaking with, I have a few sheets here of the CDPG funding that I've sourced from the Erie County Department of Planning and Environment, where, you know, CDPG funding goes to the county outside of municipalities with 50,000 people as a population or greater. They get direct CDPG funding from the federal government. So places like Hamburg, the city of Buffalo, Amherst, and I believe Tonawanda, they have, that funding that goes directly to them is discretionary to those municipalities. As far as applying for grants, up to, I guess, in years past, $300,000, that funding is discretionary up to the county. And of course, you know, what the municipality within itself decides. And according to the mayor council, or that, the group that the mayor's a part of, it'd be proposed by them. So with that, too, I mean, I would say, you know, not even an ideal, we're looking at what we have, you know, here in Lackawanna, knowing that there are development agencies, such as ourselves, Access, not just capital infrastructure, but also the social infrastructure. So again, being able to hold those spaces. And I think it just comes down to knowing where those meetings are and being, having people in the room, like here, where, you know, we can decide those things together.
And Alex, we're not, the council is not part of those meetings.
Oh, I see.
We have no input. Those meetings are, my understanding is strictly the mayors of each of those municipalities, not us. So we don't have any input. And I think the only control we may have is, as a vote, when the mayor sends down a request for funding, say for repaving or milling Kirby, which was a street, which was just done, Kirby Avenue. We could either vote it up or down, I guess.
Yeah.
But then again, we don't, we can't direct the funding, the block grant funding, to any organization or any other purpose, to my knowledge, anyway.
Absolutely. But it seems like you would have the deciding vote on if that...
On a project.
Yes, okay.
On a project.
But not exactly what that project is being...
That's my understanding, yeah.
Okay. Awesome. Well, thank you for your time. I just wanted to bring that discussion to conversation because it's important and hoping if there's still some sway for if any paving, you know, road reconstruction does come up, not to say you'll veto that, to veto it, but to know that, you know, most likely here and from other folks today, there's going to be other things that community development block grant funding could be used for.
Yeah, and of course, it's further muddy the waters with the federal cuts. As I said, we, I was told, or some of us were told, we may get half of what we normally get. And there's a question as to whether we'll even get that. So who knows where all of this is going?
Yeah.
But yeah, there's a lot of people, a lot of organizations that do great work, and they're going to be starving for funds, unfortunately.
Absolutely. Well, I can't say from the state side, there's still a good deal of funds rolling in. And again, working together, I think we can secure funds that meet all the needs of the residents, so...
Well, I think if you've got an idea, you know, the council's open ears for that, that kind of approach, so we're willing to try anything.
Wonderful.
Just about.
It sounds like we'll be in touch then. Thank you, President.
All right, Alex, thank you. Mark Williamson.
Hello.
Hey, Mark.
My name is Mark Williamson. I'm at 1840 Abbott Road, Abbott Lane. John Ingram suggested I come down here and find out what was going on with the grant. What I'm looking for is a little help in restoring the bowling center. I bought it with my own money four years ago, and I put about $270,000 of my own cash into trying to fix it up. We keep patching things, making it better, definitely better than it was. But because of all the work we do with the community, we have two different Special Olympics-type leagues. Plus, we do a lot of fundraising for people with special needs, charity groups, what have you, all the schools. We have like six, seven different schools that come to our place for field trips and stuff like that. Our parking lot is much to be desired. We patch it all the time, but every year, we keep on doing the same thing. Still have some leaks, even though I patch it every year and after every winter. The winters are pretty rough over here, so it's a long-term investment, and I was hoping that the grant might help out, working together as a part of the community, so we can be there longer.
I think you're, what you're suggesting, though, Mark, I think you're a privately-owned enterprise, right?
Correct.
So I don't think our funding would be available for that. Would be, that would be granting funds to a private enterprise, and that's unconstitutional.
According to John Ingram, formerly he has, it's for profit and nonprofit, I'm just going by what he told me. He showed me on the flyer, like, I'm here to find out what is and not possible.
Yeah, well, I don't think that's something we can go into today. Go into today, that's a rather large conversation. My understanding is not available for private enterprises. I could be wrong.
I could be wrong, too. I'm going by someone else's information that has a lot more than I have.
There's nothing wrong with asking, right?
That's true. That's true.
We referred him to LCDC.
Did you meet Alex over there?
Yep. I just met him like 15 minutes ago. Mr. Moretti has been working with me and John Ingram. We've met with Senator Baskin. I have another meeting with Senator Ryan on the 10th of December, trying to get some kind of help. But walking a lot of circles here, so I'm trying to get the final destination.
Yeah, we hear you.
But thank you very much for your time.
Well, thank you for coming.
It's my man, I talked with Mark right after he bought his property. I don't know if you remember, it's Mark, Kevin Sirdick. We talked on the phone numerous times. And during the pandemic, there was funds available. I remember I tried to steer you that way. Mark, up your rope and everything?
I wasn't there during the pandemic. I was there at Amherst.
Well, this is right after the, the funds were still available. I remember, whatever. Okay, go ahead.
Is that it?
Yeah. I guess he does.
All right. Francesca and Terrence?
Hello.
Hello again.
Hi, Francesca Kidney, 63, Doring Avenue, Lackawanna, New York, 10428. Here on behalf of Buffalo Chemical Lab and Drug Testing Center. A lot of questions that I had have already been answered with the two previous speakers, but I do thank you for your time here today as well. We did, we wanted to hopefully be here for the public portion of this, where we could speak on behalf of the lab and our requests, because we would qualify under public services and public health in community, based on the services that are rendered to obtain a portion. Traditionally, that was a different situation. So at this point, if, I mean, has it already been decided and solidified, or is there no point in requesting a meeting?
Well, it's always beneficial to request a meeting, and it's always beneficial to have a meeting. Without that, the parties involved wouldn't know what's out there and who's asking and what these entities actually do for the community. So, and that alone, I think, is beneficial and worthwhile.
Okay.
But I do think maybe a conversation or a notification with the mayor might be appropriate. Obviously, we're talking about very limited funds, and not that this is etched in stone, but past practice, it's been used for infrastructure. And the mayors apparently earmarked this for rehabilitation for the senior center on Martin Road that apparently needs work. So I think a conversation probably with the third floor might be in order.
Okay. I recall when we mentioned some things in reference to our building needing work, they stated that we should contact Erie County for the storefront and the restoration grants. And as mentioned before, that's something that could be tapped into to try to free up funding for public health services, the community services that are being offered and everything that was mentioned prior to the talk. That would be helpful.
Yeah, what you guys do is fantastic and life-saving. But Francesca, have you met Alex?
Not yet, no.
But before you leave here today, that's Alex. Have a, you should have a conversation with him.
Okay, absolutely.
But you're always welcome here, you know that.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Stop it, thank you.
Council President, just for clarification, the hearing this morning at 11 was to inform the community what the funds are earmarked for, or just to solicit ideas and conversation from them?
It's the latter, yeah.
The latter?
Yeah.
So when was it decided, because it is on our agenda today for the senior center upgrades? It seems as though it was already predetermined. Am I wrong?
Well, it hasn't been decided by us, but as we spoke earlier, the decision's made on the third floor.
Absolutely. I mean, the pre-decision to allocate the funds to the senior center, obviously, is from the mayor's office.
Right.
But that was only, was that determined after today's hearing, where it was dismal? The meeting was a minute and 24 minutes, a minute and 24 seconds long.
Yeah, the notification that came from the mayor setting up this special meeting today had already indicated the monies were proposed to be used for the senior center. Now, whether or not that is something the council can influence remains to be seen. But we haven't had any input on that decision, and the conversation with the third floor might be appropriate to see if that is etched in stone or what the intentions are.
So the individuals here today, even if they did attend the meeting at the appropriate time, would they have been listened to? That's my inquiry.
Well, that's why we gave an opportunity to speak now, because did he notice that what out apparently was an error, or somebody changed it erroneously, and they didn't have an opportunity to be heard? So normally, we don't have public hearings, or we don't have the public comment at special meetings, but because they were, for lack of a better phrase, disenfranchised, I thought it might be appropriate to have them, give them an opportunity to make their voices heard now. And I'm sure through Arianna and the Law Department and Dan with Public Works, that that will, that message will be brought to the third floor.
I'm sorry, could I just ask clarification on the posting error? I came just before the meeting started, so I'm not sure what happened with that.
Yeah, there were postings that Gray sent down that were, the first posting was for the public hearing at 11 o'clock, and then there is a posting for the city council's special meeting for voting on the two agenda issues for noon. Somebody intervened and changed that for, changed the 11 o'clock meeting for 12 o'clock.
Okay, understood.
Unbeknownst and without any authorization.
So that at the same time of the special meeting, essentially? The public hearing was changed?
It was changed for the public hearing to be held at noon, which doesn't make any sense.
I see.
And hopefully, that never happens again.
Right. Well, I think that's...
And that's why I had a discussion for some oversight as to who's responsible, who's authorized, and who's checking these things. And it turns out that even though it is double-checked, somebody took it upon themselves to change it without any discussion. And here we are.
Understood.
Yeah.
So, Council President, I mean, this is extremely concerning to me, because it seems like we're putting the cart before the horse. Are we going to decide on this today, or are we going to table it? Because it seems as though the public didn't have a fair bite at the apple.
Well, no, we're here to vote on allowing the mayor to sign to receive the grants.
To receive the grant.
To receive the grant.
But in allocation directly to the senior citizen or to senior center?
I think that's what she intends to use, and that's informational. Am I wrong?
I think that's correct.
I think that's informational.
Okay, so just the acceptance of the grant funds, right?
Yeah, if we don't do that, we've got a good time. We're going to lose...
And Danny, what's the time limit?
We may not get the funds anyways, but we're going to respect your time.
Monday.
November 3rd, the application's due.
And they, and it's my understanding...
In person, at the Rad Building.
And it's my understanding, we didn't get, I mean, we didn't get a ton of, it's kind of a, every year, I've been informed, it's, you know, we get the information all the way later. So is it fair to assess or assume that the individuals here today have the ability to go directly to the mayor and to solicit or to explain their position as far as their understanding of how the grant works and their need and desire to...
They always have that right.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Not that we don't care about their concerns, is that we're kind of powerless in that decision. And I know the mayor would be happy to meet with each of you, and I think you have, some of you have met with her before. Okay. Thank you for the understanding and the clarification.
If I may, I agree. I mean, it's a bad look. You have a public hearing for the grant funds, and then 50 minutes later, you're approving the grant funds, which obviously have already been thought out to where they're going. I mean, it's, doesn't seem, you're just going through the motions here. Doesn't seem fair. That's my opinion also.
Okay. All right, anyone else? If not, then George Halsey, former council member.
George Halsey, 305 Bridger Road, Lackawanna, New York, for two to me. Okay, now, no disrespect to anybody sitting in the room, but this doesn't make any sense. It doesn't make any sense whatsoever. If you're going to have a hearing to discuss community participation into community development block grant, which the priority of the community development block grant is to provide opportunities for low-income individuals, the infrastructure component allows for the senior citizen facility to be used for that purpose. But for the last 30 some odd years, it's been streets and sidewalks. Not having the hearing at an appropriate time, knowing a year in advance that come November of every year, community development block grant application has to be submitted to the county. This could have been done in a more timely phrase, timely phase, so that there could have been input. Then a decision made, and it would not look like you're rubber-stamping something that was decided six months ago. The hearing was held today at 11 o'clock, changed to 12 o'clock, and you're voting on the proposed project.
Okay, but as a point of clarification, council, I know, but no...
Right, no, no, that's why I said, no disrespect to the council. I understand, I understand the position that you find yourself in. It's not a good look, as a council, it's not a good look. Now, I'm going to take this into a different direction. The city of Lackawanna has no business whatsoever being in the Erie County Consortium. 33 cities, towns, and villages, where this, the first ward is the epicenter of, the urban epicenter of those 33 cities and towns. The city of Lackawanna should be a small city application, going after $5 to $10 million every single year. With the LCDC, the LHDC was formed by Teddy Catra. It was supposed to be the strategic development arm of the city of Lackawanna, to provide their expertise to be able to develop those applications on a consistent basis to take us further, to be more like the city of Buffalo, to be an entitlement community through that particular process, as opposed to going through and being part of 33 cities, towns, and villages, all to the south of here. So the council decides that every three years. The council decides to go into the county, with the county, help the county pay for all of their administration, divvy out the money that these 33 cities and towns decide to do, and then Lackawanna gives the mayor pittance. Now, I did a study about 10, 15 years ago. There was a small community right outside of New Paulson Road that formed. From the year I got in office in 1990 till roughly about 2012 or '13, somewhere in that, I think it was 2012, and in that timeframe, the city of Lackawanna had received just under $1 million. In this little village that was formed by itself, in that same period of time, it got $50 million, because it took the initiative to apply for funds consistently, and we get pittance. Now, all these organizations, everything, everything that was discussed here today could be formed in one form or another. Can't fund your building directly, but you can fund the programs in your building. There is a way through community development block grant to do just about everything. But in the present structure that you find yourself in, you're limited, because you can only get what the other little towns and villages say that you can get. It's time for the city to stand on its own two feet, move into the 21st century, and go after the funding where it is, instead of the status quo. Status quo is not good for this city long term. $100,000... $100,000, $200,000, $300,000 does not solve any problems.
Question for you, George.
Yes, sir.
During that time period when you were city council and from 1990 to 4 to 2000, what did you guys do to join that consortium?
I voted against it. I lobbied against... I voted on council against it and gave them my reason for not voting because then, back in 1990, it was not a good idea. There was too much money out there for the city. All we're doing is helping the county. And no disrespect to the county, but this is business. In business, you do what's best for you and those that you represent. I represented the First Ward. Everybody's poor. There was all kinds of issues that branches over into every segment of the community. None of those issues could be addressed because the funds that were targeted by the federal government to address those issues were going to streets and sidewalks. So those same issues from 30 years ago are the same issues today. The same uses of funds are the same uses today. At some point, at some point, we have to look forward. Forward-thinking requires you to stop looking in the past. We have to do things differently in order to get to where we want this city to be. By now, a lot of the blight should have been gone. But I know I'm out of time. But I think you get my point. And I'll follow up with a letter to the council addressing the issue and stating that the city should... This council, that's not the mayor's decision. It's this council's decision to get out of the consortium and move into a different direction. There's a new mayor coming in inside of two years. There should be a new direction for this city, thinking and doing new things to move us forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, George. Before we move on, in response to your question, Amera, I'm reviewing the... I review the resolution, the proposed resolution to the BCDG request from Mayor Iffalo. And in it, it says now therefore... And I'm quoting, "Now therefore be resolved that the Lackawanna City Council submits the following projects to be considered for funding by CDBG program during 26-27 grant cycle. First priority, senior center upgrades slash repairs." So the way the language reads is submitting for consideration this resolution. It's one step away from saying this resolution authorizes spending... The expenditure of those monies for the senior center project, but it also is a step away of saying that they are undesignated funds.
We're accepting the funds. However, this is our idea of how we want to implement the funds. But that's a separate vote when that time comes.
Well, no, it's in this resolution.
In consideration, it's not...
In what it says, that the Lackawanna City Council submits the following projects to be considered for funding by the CDBG program during the 26-27 grant cycle. So we're not... In my opinion, we're not authorizing that, but we're showing it as a first priority. Now, a question would be a legal one. Arianna, do you have a position on whether or not, if we pass this as it's stated right now? And I don't think it authorizes or condones the use for the senior center, but it's... The council would have a hard time arguing against itself, saying, "Well, we showed it as a first priority."
Yeah, I don't have a specific answer. It was my understanding that the senior center upgrades would be the first priority. I don't have, as I sit here today, an exact idea of the amount of the repairs that would be necessary. I don't know if we've even gotten that far in terms of how much money we need for the senior center upgrades. But I read this as it would be a first priority.
Yeah. So in order to eliminate any confusion, the council might decide to redact or to change the language in the resolution, authorizing the city to enter into the agreement with the county for the block grant funds, but remaining silent as to the designation of those funds for what purpose until the vote comes back to the city council to appropriate those funds.
That could be an option, Council President, although I would have to take a look at this specific grant application because I know some grants require like a specific priority or require a municipality to identify what the funding will be used for. So I'm not sure if the resolution would be sufficient for the county's purposes if it didn't include any particular priority or any identified use for the grant.
Well, I think we need to find that out. But the problem is, we're running out of time.
Right.
Who is filling out the application for the grant?
The city's grant writer.
Is the city grant writer here?
No.
We should have decided this long ago. It shouldn't have waited till the last hour. This is a repetitive thing. It's a cycle every year. It's no surprise. It didn't just fall from the sky. We should have had the opportunity to discuss this. People should have been... There should have been two hearings about this. One in the summer, maybe one in the spring. Having it drop on our desks at the 11th hour is unacceptable. But the money is needed. That's the thing. We're not going to reject it because of some technicality or some error that happened. The money is definitely needed. Where it's allocated to can be a discussion later because we have to approve that later with the implementation of how we designate the funds.
And I... Well, I think the... Showing the senior center upgrades and repairs was the presentation that the mayor made to the committee approving the block grant funds for the city.
Wasn't that done prematurely though, too? Without the input of the community?
Well, whether it is or it isn't, there's an argument to be made that the committee is the deciding body as to what municipalities get what for what project. So this may have been what the mayor proposed to that committee in order to justify getting our funds.
Well, the mayor should have been here today.
Well, the mayor was at the public hearing.
Right, right. But because of the error of time, there should have been some flexibility on behalf of the mayor to be here if we're going to have public discussion.
Sure, I don't think the mayor is even aware that there was an error because I found out about it quite literally 30 seconds before this meeting started.
Well, that's another problem because somebody was aware that there was a problem and none of... And when I walked in today, this was news to me.
Same.
And nobody spoke to me about it.
I didn't know either. And I do not know if the mayor's aware, but the mayor was, of course, at the public hearing at 11:00.
When is November 3rd, Paul?
Monday.
What is it?
Monday. So from my understanding, the way that application... When you submit the application, you have priority one. Then we would... I mean, if we had that public hearing input from the public, then administration would discuss it. So priority one, senior center. Priority two, priority three. Whatever the administration decides to put on the grant application.
The fact that it's a priority doesn't mean that's where the money's going to go.
Correct.
So I'm not uncomfortable passing this resolution today as it is. And I think we're on the record as to our concerns. And therefore, when the time comes for the council to vote on the appropriation of those funds, that we have an up or down vote on it at that time.
Agreed.
But I'd hate to lose the opportunity to get these funds.
Absolutely. I agree.
So I think we... I would vote in favor of this with the understanding that there are folks here that need to be heard and there needs to be addressed by the third floor.
Which they understand they have the right to do.
Yeah, and hopefully they understand that. Anyone else have any comment, input? Okay, in that case, let's move forward with the agenda.
Mayor Iffalo requests the city council approve the resolution regarding use of the CBDG community development block grant funds for 2026-2027.
Morano moves to receive and file act on the resolution. Anderson seconds.
Motion by Morano, second by Anderson to receive and file act on resolution. Maflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sardik?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0. A resolution designating the use of the CBDG funding for the 2026-2027 grant cycle. First priority, senior center upgrades and repairs.
Morano moves to adopt the resolution as written with the understanding that the first priority is a wish list consideration only. Moretti second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti to adopt resolution as written with the understanding that the first priority is a list wish item only.
Is a wish list item only.
Yes. Maflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sardik?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0. City attorney on behalf of the mayor requests the city council consider and approve the human resource manager job description. This position was budgeted for and approved by the city council in the 2025-2026 budget year.
Morano moves to approve request. Anderson second.
Motion by...
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Question something? This is going to be a part-time job, right?
That's correct.
Arianna?
Yep, that's correct.
There's no health insurance, no benefits, no nothing like that?
Correct.
This is... This position's already been approved by the council earlier?
It's already in the budget, yeah.
Budgeted for, yes.
It was in the budget. However, we discussed that having it in the budget, it's our decision to approve it later or to reject it because of the salary that's allocated to this, which is $35,000, which to the understanding of the council was that the prior city attorney's salary was increased by $35,000 to take on that burden. However, now it's earmarked at $150,000, but there's still a need for an HR rep or resource manager. So we're double... We're paying twice for one service.
The... My understanding is when we approve the budget, the position was approved and for the amount allocated in the mayor's proposed budget, unamended by the council for that position. Now, this, today's action, is to approve the job description only. It's... That's my understanding.
Right, do these.
So it's not... We're not going back to rehashing whether the position is needed or not or what the funding is or the appropriation for the funding. The position exists. Our input today is strictly to address whether or not the job description is adequate as far as the council is concerned. I thought it was, but maybe you guys think differently. So I don't think this is a position to rehash that budget item. Budget item, it would be inappropriate and not germane to the issue.
I disagree, but...
I want fairness.
I disagree as far as the analysis that you presented before us in that the actual job itself was not necessarily approved, but it was within the budget. And there was a discussion about this particular job description or this particular position at the time of the budget. And it was... In a nutshell, it was although we're approving the budget, when the time comes to hire this individual, we can either approve it or disapprove. And that was my understanding, was based on the fact that the HR rep would be taking on the job of what the city attorney had been assigned and paid additional for.
Okay, let me clear that whole thing up.
Sure.
The council would have jurisdiction, my understanding, to an up or down vote for the individual who is to fill the position. As in past, sometimes there's not a local resident qualified to fill the position and therefore, we waive the residency rule, whatever the case may be, and approve the appointment. Secondly, and most importantly, this position was approved for a human resource officer strictly on the basis and on a solid basis and foundation that to have the city attorney continue to serve as a human resource officer is a direct conflict of the duties of the city attorney. For instance, the city attorney, to my understanding, is the hearing officer should there be a hearing required as to disciplinary action, et cetera, on an individual who has been brought before the city on charges or has brought charges against a supervisor or another employee or an elected official, or whatever the case may be. So to have the city attorney charged with investigating, hearing the complaint, and then hearing the factual resolution as to whether the person is in violation or not, to me is unacceptable, is a direct conflict. And if that decision was made under those auspices and circumstances and the matter was brought before a judge downtown, the decision would be overturned because it's an obvious conflict, in my opinion. Therefore, my recollection of what we discussed at the budgetary hearing was the very fact that there's a conflict to have this city attorney or any other supervisory individual currently employed by the city to act also as a human resource officer. That department, in my opinion, needs to be independent. Therefore, when we approved that position in the budget, that approved the mayor to fill that position. And it doesn't allow us to go back on a line-by-line basis to decide, well, we no longer like that decision to approve what we approved already by passing that budget. That's my thought.
Understood, and I completely agree with the conflict of interest of the attorney being also the disciplinary for HR. That should have never happened. However, it did happen and they were compensated for it. So how do we... It was before your time, Arianna. Arianna, it was before your time. It has nothing to do with you as an individual.
I just... Since the budget hearings, we... I kind of looked into that. It was my understanding there... I don't know that that... I'll let the council president speak, but I didn't think it was accounted for.
I don't remember that as being a consideration for the raise. I do remember a consideration for the raises as the amount of work that the law department was doing, including assuming the responsibilities of overseeing the building inspectors in the department. That, I thought, was a factor.
I remember that as well as HR duties is included. It was inclusive of HR duties and that was the increase from, I believe it was $120,000 to $150,000.
Yeah. I don't actually remember that.
So do we keep the compensation with the understanding that they're no longer going to be taking on those HR duties?
Well, I think it's difficult. I don't know what the legalities of it are, but we approve... Again, it's a budget item. We approve the amount, the yearly salary for the city attorney. I don't know how we could go back and change that at this point. I don't know what the legalities would be, but it might be a conversation for this next year's budget. I don't know.
Yeah, and I did after... Because I remember, Councilwoman Maflahe, I think you brought that up at the budget hearing. And I went back and tried to look at when the transition between Mr. Rick Judah and John Gahn was occurring, whether I could find any council meeting discussion of an increased salary relating to the human resources position. I may have missed it, but I couldn't. I thought the attorney's salary was increased as a recruitment tool, essentially.
Then that something could be visited again at the next budgetary consideration.
No, the HR duties were definitely discussed with us, whether or not they were itemized, Arianna, again, this has, it's nothing personal.
Oh, no, I don't take it personally.
This is taxpayer dollars, we are here to monitor and to approve, reject, and have an understanding of where taxpayer dollars are going, and if we're frivolous, or, excuse me, irresponsible with it, that's, that's shame on us. So it has nothing to do with you personally, I think your work is outstanding, however, we do have to focus on where money can be spent otherwise, because if one position was increased based on the understanding of having an HR component to it, and then totally ignoring it, and then hiring an HR, and not, excuse me, not reducing one budget to take care of the other one, that's irresponsible, in my point of view.
Oh, I completely understand, I don't take it personally at all. I just couldn't find any record of that being part of the conversation.
And this certainly could be a consideration in the next budget. Anyone else?
And if it was discussed, which I think it was, it wouldn't be in a minute of the meetings.
Oh, no, that's fine, I went and looked, I was looking at the meetings themselves, like I was trying to watch the meetings. But regardless, understood.
Okay, the motion's on table.
Motion by Morano, second by Anderson, to approve request. Maflahe?
No.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 4 to 1. Adjournment?
Morano moves to adjourn.
Moretti second.
Motion by Morano, second by Maflahe, to adjourn meeting. Maflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0.